Yeah, maybe. All set cable, ready when you are.
There we go.
Okay, we're gonna open up this meeting, it's about 7:02. I'm gonna let the public know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be on channel nine, you should be seeing it live if you're at home. And you have Comcast, and also it will be uploaded to YouTube. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and also remain standing, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to request a moment of silence for some residents who recently passed away. Mr. Charles King, Mrs. Loix Oktalik, and I have one to add, and Mrs. Joanne Shotoff. Mrs. Shotoff is the mother-in-law of Linda McCarron, the assistant town accountant. And she also has a son living in North Dayton. Mrs. Oktalik was one of the nurses who was responsible for bringing the Sojourn Bear project to Dayton. She and Mrs. Kathy Scott were nurses at Morton Hospital. So, in memory of their passing, I would ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our condolences to their loved ones.
Okay, so the first agenda item is, there's a request for appointing new assistant treasurer and collector from the present treasurer and collector, Mary Hathaway. So you have a recommendation? I'll entertain a motion.
Before I make a motion, I did just want to thank both Mrs. Franca and Mrs. Hathaway for doing an exceptional job while this vacancy was open. So it's greatly appreciated, I know it probably wasn't easy. And as always, we miss you Helen, and we hope you're doing well. With that, I make a motion to appoint Christina Franca as our new assistant treasurer collector.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Congratulations Christina.
Thank you.
This is very good news, thank you.
It is.
And I do have one question, so now you will have to fill Christina's current position. Oh, so your work's not done.
Never is.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Public input, is there any public input?
I actually have an announcement from the fire and police chiefs. Bristol Aggie is beginning their construction work, and they're going to be closing one lane on Saturday between the hours of seven and three. So that's September 21st, we just wanna let you know to expect delays in that area. And there's been some news articles that we posted about it, but just in case you missed those on Saturday, September 21st between seven and three, it's one lane, and expect delays. Thank you.
Thank you. Town administrators, report.
So for more hiring, we went out, as you know, to attempt to hire an administrative assistant part-time for our office. We conducted interviews, and then a second interview. We had a selected candidate who did decline the offer and sought employment elsewhere. She had another opportunity. So unfortunately, we were unable to fill it, my update is just that we are looking to repost. I was considering asking if you wanted to go out for full-time right out of the gate, instead of saying the potential for full-time as we had advertised last time. Really, that's up in the air, I didn't know what your thoughts were on it, but we're prepared to basically post tomorrow.
Yeah, I had expressed to you that I have, at this time anyway, no interest in making a full-time position. We don't know how many hours this is gonna entail, so I think we need to start off with the 20 hours that we discussed before. We need to expand maybe information about the position, so that we can get more applicants to join. How many did we get?
We got 21 applicants, we selected nine to, I'm sorry, it might have been eight, to interview. When we scheduled those interviews, two didn't return the call. So we had six individuals with a final two, but we feel the need to repost at this time. And just thank you to Mrs. Brady, who really spent a lot of time on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Brady. I definitely wanna echo our chairman's sentiments, I feel the same way, and if you recall, the chairman was much more out in front on this than I was. I didn't even want it to be a benefited position, I honestly wanted it to be 19 hours. And I feel that we sort of sweetened the pot by making it 20 hours, and now this person will be eligible for benefits. So I would like to stick to that, but I also want you all to know that I am open to the idea in the future that this, there may be a need for additional hours, but I feel like, you know, we should, we should allow the role to kind of figure that out, rather than do it right out the gate, yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. Gulart?
Yeah, I agree too, because it's a brand-new position, and we don't have anything to compare it to, but to determine what we should be doing.
So we don't need to take a vote or anything like that?
Nope. It'll correct.
We haven't changed anything.
My other, great, thank you. My other item is about our surplus auction, and you do have in your packet tonight a full list of everything. You have incrementally voted all of these items surplus and declared them at one time in an effort to streamline so that my file is nice and complete. I'm just asking for that vote one more time as it's presented tonight, because it's all in one spot. This auction is going on now, it's through Auctions International, we have a link on our website, there is a, you can view the items down over by the transfer station, and there's an LED sign that also explains that the auction's going on now. It ends on October 4th, and we have some pretty good bids so far. So actually, really surprising to me how high some of these items are going, so that's great news.
So I do have a couple of questions about some of the items. We have two jail cells?
I know, it was very odd to write that. They're taken apart, they are the cells that were in the old police station.
I feel like calling them jail cells is really doing them much more dignity than, they're really like cages. They really are, that's what they are.
And they're all dismantled, it actually, it looks like fence, it's not fencing, but it looks like fencing at this point, it's all dismantled and taken apart.
I'd just be interested in seeing who would be interested in buying a jail cell, I don't, put it in the basement, whatever.
Do we keep track of who, to the chairman's point, I apologize Selectman Gulart, when those items are sold, like, do we keep a record of?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So there's a whole process to this. So once the auction is completed, highest bidder goes through the process, there's a couple of pieces of paper to sign, if there's a town employee interested, they sign conflict of interest paperwork, and they have two weeks to pick it up. It is where is and as is, and, you know, in some cases, we don't, these things don't work, so they have two weeks to pick it up, and that's it, we call it a day. And then we will keep a track of how much we have gotten from each, and I think the town accountant would appreciate that.
So we also have a deer skin? On the list?
Oh, that's...
Deer skin animal?
No, it's not a deer skin animal, it's a vehicle, I apologize, I must have gotten interrupted and then just kept going. It's a, it's a, there's a picture of it, it's not a deer skin animal. I will, what I will do for next week is I will rewrite that item and how you declare. Highway, I believe.
Uh-oh.
So it could be.
No, it's not. I apologize, I must have...
Is it a John Deere? Like, am I reading too much into this?
Yes.
I thought of the same thing when you said it wasn't a deer skin.
It's not anything that I ever, like, I don't, like a Wisconsin pony motor, like, I've never heard of some of these things. Some of this is military surplus that we're allowed to dispose of, so they would have, it would have been used for military purposes.
I like the water buffalo with the 600 gallon tank, this is gonna be a big buffalo.
That is actually correct, that's the actual.
I like that you put the animal ones together, the Wisconsin pony motor.
How about the corn cookie jar?
Yeah, I saw that.
I may be interested in that, we'll hold on to that one.
Laptop computers, they're, three of them, they're outdated.
All of our computers on this list are scrubbed clean, first of all, but they're not of any use. So this is the lot, we, as departments, had the opportunity to go through, and that's how we got a lot of our stuff, that's new in the selectmen's office, and we had the opportunity to go through it collectively. The animal control officer actually got quite a bit of items for her new shelter, which was great. But then, at the end of the day, a lot of us didn't need, you know, extra things like this, so it is now true surplus, and maybe somebody else out there is interested in having.
It's five DVD players, so we don't have a need for that, I guess we have, we must have some, but we don't need five, these five, I guess.
I believe, so when the cable committee, and I feel weird talking about them when they're watching this, but the cable committee kind of cleaned out their area, they took all of the defunct equipment and put it in a couple of lists. You have actually declared that surplus previously.
I suspect some of this is before I became selectman, because I don't recognize some of the stuff, but I...
Like the video cassette recordings? To name one. So...
Some of these may have been before Brett was born.
Yeah, some of these, some of these are sort of a little older, I guess my question is since, like, is your recommendation that we wait to approve this as is?
No, no, that's not, I would actually like you to revote this all surplus together, so we have it in one lot.
I just wanted to see if my colleagues had any questions.
Do any of the items have a minimum bid?
They all have a minimum bid, they vary based upon what they are, and then the bid increments also vary based upon what it is. So I think it's, for office supplies, it's like a dollar is the increment, but if it's a vehicle, it's higher.
Okay.
And the money from the auction goes back into the general funds? So it's not a situation where the 2008, I'm making this up, the 2008 Crown Vic came from the police department, that money goes into the police, okay, that makes sense.
General fund. And I would like to thank Jim Aggyar, Tom Ferry, the highway department in total, and Detective Richards, whose work helped create this and made it happen so smoothly and seamlessly.
Any other questions about the list, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we declare all items as presented this evening in this list as surplus.
Is there a second?
A second. Should we say and we authorize sale at public auction?
Yep.
Yep, I accept that amendment.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Excellent work to everyone involved in the list.
So for the items that don't go, 'cause like the civil defense radios are, you know, really obsolete, would you pre-authorize, you don't have to, but would you pre-authorize us to dispose of, just if nobody's buying these at auction, or scrapping something that?
I personally don't feel comfortable doing that, but I don't know what the items are that we're gonna be scrapping, so, but I, we may very well in the near future.
So what I'm gonna take with this list is check off what was taken, and then you'll see it again with what was out, so thank you.
And maybe, not that we have to publicly advertise, but at posting on our website, we might say, "By the way, these items did not go at the auction, does anyone have any interest on these?" We still have, some people might have bid initially saying, "Oh, I can't bid enough," but if they're left over, you may accept.
But they don't wanna go to an auction or something like that.
Yeah, so I think the public auction the first time is fine, and then we publish a list and say, "We still got these if anyone's interested."
And that is all I have for my report.
All business, we have a letter from the chairman of the Dayton Board of Health, I'm gonna read the letter. Distinguished Board of Selectmen, as you may be aware, there's been some confusion regarding the salary and number of weekly hours the agent currently is receiving. I believe this is in part due to the conditional motion regarding the job description that was taken at a budget meeting on February 27, 2019. The budget at-town meeting for this position has been approved for 28 hours weekly at the rate of $35.60 per hour, and it was our understanding it would become effective July 1, 2019 at the beginning of the new fiscal year. Since the beginning of the new fiscal year, the agent has worked 28 hours weekly and has performed all the duties and responsibilities of the new health and stormwater agent job description as the previous rate of $30 per hour. This includes two major reviews of the strawberry field subdivision and the ongoing review of the agricultural school expansion, which has saved the town of Dayton several thousand dollars in third-party review fees. We are hopefully, we are hopeful that this can be easily rectified since the available funds were approved and are on the current budget. We also ask you to consider full payment of salary retroactive to July 1, 2019. If necessary, I would be more than happy to attend one of your meetings to further explain or answer any questions you may have. Respectfully submitted, Tom Pires, he's the chairman of the Dayton Board of Health.
He was...
Do we know why this wasn't, if the money was funded, why?
Sure.
They didn't get the, he didn't get the money?
First, I'll say that he is supposed to be here, I think he's maybe stuck at planning board right now, I don't know if you wanna wait until he's here, but what I can say is what I know, when they came before you as a department requesting the increase in their budget, and they mentioned hours for the office manager, and we did, you did go forward and authorized that, and then he also requested an increase in hours for the health agent, it was tied to stormwater duties, and it was contingent upon having a job description reviewed, updated, and voted on here. We made that condition, they did get this, you just voted on it recently, you did get the job description together, and so then everything would have kicked in and gone forward. What they're now asking is the three hours, excuse me, the increase in hours, increase in pay, $35. They wanna know if that can be retroactive to July 1. Your motion the night of February 27th was, quote, "The increase," and we can't be certain if it was the increase in pay that you were discussing, or the increase in hours that you were discussing. So this is an additional vote, but he is supposed to be here, so I feel a little awkward.
I have a general question for anyone. So I recall at the meeting, to your point, that we made the hourly rate increase based on a change in the job description, but they didn't get the job description to us until last month, or it was a couple of weeks ago. So I guess my question for everyone is, why would we make it retroactive back to July 1, when at that point, we didn't have the job description with the change in duties?
So that's why we're here, we're here to get clarification on the words, "the increase." Were you, in your motion, talking about the total increase, the increase in pay and the increase in hours collectively?
I couldn't have been speaking about that at that time, because we didn't have a job description with the changes in the duties at that point, so how could, I'm only speaking for myself.
Right, so they requested at the same time during the budget process, 30, an increase from $30 an hour to $35 an hour, and an increase in hours, three additional hours a week.
Selectman Gulart, you are on the stormwater committee, has the health agent been?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold comment until he's present.
Okay.
So why don't we hold up on this item? Hopefully he'll, he'll be here.
It's probably due to the planning board meeting, I don't mean to say that he's...
Yeah, I know, the meeting has six, but they, the meeting went on. New business, review and approve public safety communication operating job posting and description.
Was able to work with the police chief and the communications central liaison, we updated this job description, and because of that, it's here before you for review, the union was okay with it.
I know I reviewed it, I was okay with the job description.
Yep, I have no issues, Mr. Chairman.
I just, on the, the first notice, it says, and it's assuming that we approve, applications will be accepted until Wednesday, September 25th, that gives us less than a week now, so we're gonna...
So do you see how it's highlighted, that's just the filler?
Okay, you can change the date.
Yeah, the highlight is fill in the blank essentially, that's not...
Okay, I highlighted it, so I was just...
I did too.
So, so what would be a reasonable time period, two weeks?
So I actually think, we are pressed, and we need to get people in there, but I don't think two weeks is a good enough timeframe, I like to extend it, are you comfortable with a month, or?
When's our October meeting?
October 9th and 23rd, yes. So the 9th is about two weeks away. We could definitely have it all set on the 23rd.
It's three weeks away, right? I don't wanna rush it, so I don't, but I do wanna resolve it as quickly as possible.
My concern, it's just a concern in general about the interview process, is that if we leave it open that long, and then we still have to do the interviews, I feel we might lose people, 'cause that has definitely happened in this town. When you keep, so it's not just the application collecting, then you have to do the interviews, and then, you know, you might be two months out. I know when I was applying for new jobs, I said, you know, "I'm all set to places where it would take two months," it's just, so that, that's my concern about having a lengthy application collection process.
We're meeting October the 9th?
Yes.
And the 23rd?
Mm-hmm.
That's just our regular schedule.
You're right, right, 'cause I know we, the last couple of months, we got things kinda, we got a meeting next week, right, we're kinda boxed together here. Yeah, I don't wanna rush, but I agree with Dr. Zee that we seem to be having problems with, we get good candidates, but somebody else scoops them up before we are able to act on it, so, is, let's see.
I plan on, if this is approved, tomorrow, posting it tomorrow, so that would be your start date for collecting applications.
I guess I would like to have a candidate, or candidates for the 23rd. I think the 9th, might be rushing it, as you pointed out, I don't wanna delay it too long, but maybe the 23rd.
Yeah, I'm looking at all these dates, too, and I'm thinking, yeah, there's a process that you gotta go through.
Yeah.
I agree, it's just a delicate balance between having a long enough period and, and not making it too long that you lose someone who's very marketable, so...
So when do you wanna close them, the 9th of October?
Yeah, that makes sense, then we take the 11th and, or 9, excuse me, 10 and 11 to review, and then we interview the following week with a recommendation to you by the 23rd, that works fine.
Is this process going to impede the other jobs that we're trying to fill as well? We have the, we have Christina's former position now, we have the administrative assistant, and also the town accountant.
So administrative assistant is Karen and I, the Christina's role is Sue and Mary.
Okay.
This one is the two chiefs, they did ask me to sit in, I can back out of that and just sit in.
But they're taking the lead on that? Okay, I don't wanna overextend everyone, is my, is my concern on that.
Different, various teams, I guess. But I appreciate that, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set the closing date for applications for public safety communications operator as Wednesday, October the 9th, at 12:00 PM.
Second.
Do we, do we have to approve also the, before we take a moment, the job description?
The job description, yes.
And that we approve the job description as presented tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the abstention, the ayes have it.
Anyone interested, that'll be on our website, if you wanna take a look at it, I'll post it as soon as possible, and thank you to the chief, the police chief, and dispatcher Costa for their help.
Thank you, everyone.
So we're gonna go back to all business, Mr. Pires is here, now we began discussing this, but then we decided that best to have you come in and explain to us. So I read the letter that you presented to the board of selectmen, and is there anything you would like to add to that letter?
Is Todd coming tonight?
No.
Okay, could I comment since somebody is here? I can tell you why there was a delay in writing the job description, because the, we were looking for additional time for the stormwater committee, and when we sat down and looked at all of this, the stormwater committee felt that the not, the three hours should really relate to a job description for the stormwater part of the job. We worked on that for a while, it ended up that it got, it's not a separate job description, although the work that we expect, I realize three hours a week is not a lot, but we were focused on that as part of our overall stormwater management program. That time got eventually moved into the final job description combination thing that we voted on, but part of the reason was that the stormwater committee felt strongly that, hey, we want the three hours, and we want it designated, if you will, stormwater time. That's what I remember.
It still is, but, you know, to solve the matter, we decided, the decision was made to do exactly like the board ordered on. I, I still believe it could be two separate jobs belonging to the same person, like with our ECO and our inspector, but, you know, to resolve it and move forward, we put them together. Someday, they probably have to be split, but since that happened, we, whether we assumed the wrong thing or not, he started working 28 hours a week, and until such time, we put those two job descriptions together, he was paid $30, his current, his previous rate. Once that was approved, now he has performed the duties of the job, so what we're requesting is that, I mean, he...
He'd be compensated.
He just got done with, you know, strawberry, as you can see, the strawberry fields in Bristol Aggie, which is a big project, so I would ask the board to consider retro on his, you know, new rate from July 1.
So I have...
It's in the budget, by the way.
Yeah, correct, I believe we, we also approved it during our, the board of selectmen's budget process for fiscal year 2020. My question, because this is a very black and white issue for me, has Mr. Pilling been doing those new, like, stormwater job duties from July 1, 2019 on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so then, that's, that's fine for me, he's been doing it, he should be compensated for it, that's what people voted to have in the budget.
The other thing I will mention, I discussed this several times with the former town accountant, and said, why, what is the holdup, why is he not being paid? She said, "I have a vote that indicates the position and the hours were approved, I do not have a vote from the board of selectmen that specifically says, 'at the hourly rate of X, beginning July 1.'" And I said, "But that's what's in the budget," she says, "But I need that separate vote." In the meantime, we're working on job descriptions, so the time went by, there's no question he's been doing the work.
That was my, my whole issue was just making sure that he's compensated for the work that he did, the new work, the additional work that kinda started on July 1, 2019.
And we are doing cost allocation, so that part of his salary is being allocated to stormwater, so we can show in the budget how we can verify expenses if we're audited.
Sure, and so to your point, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, so I'll entertain a motion to increase the, his wages of $35.60, which I thought we had voted on. which I thought we had voted on last February.
I did.
And that'd be retroactive to July 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, I just wanted to thank Mr. Pilling for being so patient and understanding. I know he does a great job. His work is stellar and it precedes him, so we thank him very much. We're very fortunate.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the abstention, the ayes have it.
And thank you, Chairman Pires.
Thank you.
Mr. Pilling will be happy. Madam Town Administrator, could I meet you in the morning sometime, 9:00, 10:00, 11:00?
I have a meeting at 9:00. It can't be too late because I have, I have to go to a funeral. How early can you, 8:30? 8:30?
8:30 would be plenty. Okay. Yeah, it's about the kennel.
Okay.
There was a little hangup, I just needed a little help, I think, trying to fix it, so. All right?
I'll see you.
So have a good evening.
Okay, the next, on the new business, the next agenda item is the vote to accept the Americans with Disabilities Act grievance procedure. I assume everybody had an opportunity to take a look at it.
Yes. Um, I think this is fabulous. I have no edits to the content. I would like to make one suggestion, because I think this is something that will go on the website. It will also perhaps go in our policy manual. It may go a bunch of different places. If we could just spruce it up and put it in our...
Format.
Format, yeah. So everything is consistent. But it's been a long time coming and I'm happy to see it here.
I'll entertain a motion.
Our Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the grievance seizure for Americans with disabilities at complaints as prepared this evening.
Second.
Is there a second? My only question is on the 60 days, 60 days, calendar days to 11th, on the violation. Is that reasonable? I don't, I don't know.
So I actually thought this was a lot longer than should, like I, if I were the aggrieved or, you know, aggrieved party, I would like faster movement on this. I went to go change it and Mr. Gail, the ADA coordinator, told me that this was what the state said. So to deviate from it, I didn't think that was a good idea, but I have the same inkling. Hopefully we're moving quicker than that.
We made the motion, second.
Good, Steve.
All those in favor, any further discussion?
No, I just wanted to thank Mr. Gail, our ADA coordinator, for his help in preparing this. I think it is very important and we really thank all that he does.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the abstentions, no abstentions, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is the vote to demolish 949 Somerset Avenue and notify historical commission. To give just a little bit of background to the townspeople, last March 28th, at a special town meeting, the town voted to purchase the property next door, 949 Somerset Avenue. And it was approved by the townspeople. I made a motion to ask that $60,000 of free cash be appropriated to maintain the building, to put a roof on it, to close the building up, tighten the building up, pending our decision whether or not to, what we were going to do with the building. There was no second to that motion, so there was no discussion. I kind of hoped that one of my colleagues would have seconded it, at least for discussion, but that didn't happen. So clearly the townspeople have decided that they don't, they do not want to spend the $60,000 to maintain the house. It would have cost additional monies to make it presentable for the town. So we're going to be voting, there'll be a motion, I'm sure, to demolish 949 Somerset Avenue. But we did receive three letters and I will read those three letters. First letter is from Myrna Santos, who's our town historian. Good morning. I was speaking with Selectman Pacico yesterday and he informed me that there is to be a vote at your meeting this week about raising the James Briggs House on the property just purchased by the town of Dayton. As a lifelong citizen of Dayton, born in this town, town historian and member of the Dayton Historical Commission, I request that you hold the vote in abeyance until the townspeople have been informed of the matter and have a chance to weigh in. At the town meeting, when emotional funds to salvage it was not seconded, the voters had schools on their minds and the fate of the house was not important to them. I completely understand that. However, I hope that the board of selectmen will, in your wisdom, decide to give the taxpayers a time for commentary before making such a stock and everlasting decision as to vote for the raising of that house without requesting public input first. At least give folks an opportunity to be heard, request their ideas and questions. The final decision then fails, falls to the people who own the building. Time is not the, of the essence here as to the raising. A request for public input on this matter is of course not required, but it would be a great courtesy extended to those who voted you, your positions as their representation, representatives in town government. The second letter is from Cheryl Phillips Colby. I was close friends with Debbie Derrick. Now she was the prior owner, not when we purchased it, but the owner prior to that, back in the 90s anyway, in middle school and spent a lot of time after school in this wonderful home. Debbie's mom put so much of her heart into this home and I was awestruck when I first visited, which is saying a lot for a kid in middle school. This home has been shown so much love and it should not be destroyed because someone else came along and neglected it. This is a home for the ages. Dayton needs to stop making money. Dayton needs to stop making money their only consideration. This home is worth saving. As for the others in town, Dayton is so callously tossed away via the wrecking ball. This is not the Dayton I grew up in and I'm sure my dad, David L. Phillips, was turning over in his grave at the community church cemetery, watching Dayton's leaders disregard its history. Dayton was a special place growing up. Please stop picking away at its history and the pieces of the past. These things are all that made Dayton a great town to grow up in. Disregarding this past is lumping Dayton into the same category as any town USA. Please stop, please preserve, please commit your love to this town in the form of remembering its history and the important people that founded this great town. Please give your community the keys to the past, not toss them away. The third letter I'm going to read is from Rafa Delphin. He's a member of the historic commission. We, the current members of the Facebook group Save the James Briggs House, are writing to express our concern about the fate of the James Briggs House, a historical house located 949 Somerset Avenue, which has been recently purchased by the town of Dayton. We are extremely dismayed to hear about the possible demolition of this mentioned house, especially since, less than a month after the demolition, especially less than a month after demolition of the historic Nat Crane House at 130 Center Street, that James Briggs House, not the Nat Crane House and old buildings of historical significance, like the Nat Crane House and old buildings of historical significance, represents the past. Seeing these buildings help modern day people remember the past, as to not repeat it, ought to be mindful of how a town of nations came to be. Old towns, old buildings are reminders of the town culture and complexity. We must preserve historic houses because once a piece of history is destroyed, it's lost forever. We ask that the town officials grant the citizens of Dayton, as well as former residents and anyone who has connections to the town, more time to discuss the fate of the house and possible, possibly to come up with a viable solution to save it without taking a single penny for taxpayers. So if there is a motion to demolish the house, the building commissioner will make the request to the historical commission that the house be demolished. The historical commission, by the way, I'm a member of the historical commission, will get, be given an opportunity to have a public hearing and let the people decide whether or not they feel that this building is worth preserving, whether it's a building to preserve. Doesn't mean that the historic commission can stop the town from tearing it down, but it will give the opportunity for the historic commission to take a look at it, see if there's anybody who's interested in taking down the building and building it someplace else. So it's a possibility, it can be preserved, but that will be a responsibility, if this passes, of the historic commission. So people know, I happened to go, I went to the building maybe nine months ago, nine months ago, it was during the winter. The building is not the same as it was when the Derrings owned the house. It has got mold on the second floor. However, I went with the building commissioner as well as the board of health agent and we all agree that the building is a strong, a safe building. It's not on the verge of collapsing or anything like that, so. I'll entertain a motion, if anybody wants to speak for us, but I'll entertain a motion.
I had a, I wanted to make a couple brief comments before making any motions this evening. As we all know, as Chairman Pacico had mentioned before, residents at a town meeting, apparently, I can only go based on the votes, but it seems like the fact that the motion wasn't seconded, that they didn't feel comfortable spending money on the house. And in addition, there really was no proposed use for the house at that time. And I just feel in general, very strongly, that my job as a selectman is to implement the directives that residents provide us with in the form of votes at town meetings. So I, I'm going to go along with it. To Mrs. Santos's letter that people's minds were on the schools, she's absolutely right, but their, people's minds are still on the schools, because we still have a space crunch issue. I believe the elementary school is at capacity starting sometime next year, maybe the fall of 2020, with the middle school a few years after being at capacity as well. I, I agree that the past is very important. We learn from our history or else we're doomed to repeat it. I believe strongly in that. But as a selectman, I feel like I'm tasked with balancing the future with the past. And unfortunately, from my perspective, I feel that our town has been stuck in the past for far too long. And so that's why I have to focus on the future. We know that there may be the need to work on the following buildings. Dayton Public Library hasn't been compliant, at least with the teen room, as I understand. The highway garage, Fire Station 1. There's talks of a new school, although a study needs to be done before anyone can conclude that. And so since we need to preserve these historic homes, I have a suggestion. Instead of everyone being reactive, concerned residents should work hand in hand with the historical society and the historical commission to be proactive in creating a historic housing inventory that should be included in the Massachusetts Historical Register. That way, we would be eligible for grants to help offset the costs to the taxpayer of restoring these historic homes in town and the demolition of these homes would be prohibited. So those are my comments.
Being a member of the historical society also, it's not that easy to have a house registered either with the state or the federal government. It means you can't, the original, outside of the house has to be, has to be original. For example, my house is almost 250 years old. I'm in the process, this morning I was making molding for the windows for the trim on the outside of the house. It's not the original trim. I have, my windows are 12 over 12, they're about 15 years old, but they're aluminum clad, so the, I could never register my house unless I took those windows out. It's a house that I live in, so I'm concerned about energy and everything else, so. But I'm preserving the building the best I can. The problem is, we have developers and contractors that come into town, they see an old house. It's easier for them to knock it down than to preserve the building and they can maybe get two or three house lots out of it. We've torn down the Nathaniel Fisher House, which has been moved to Manapoiset, which is fortunate. The Goodings Clock Shop has been torn down. The Lafayette Church House has been torn down. The Stout Briggs House across the street has been torn down. Just recently, the Nat Crane House was taken down. Now I oppose the town spending, it was going to be about $450,000 to move that house and to make it a livable, a workable house. I oppose that and I think it was a good wise use of the town property. The house next door, my concern is that the house next door, that the town purchased it knowing that there was a building on it, is an historic building, goes back to about 1750. Stout Briggs' son, James Briggs, lived in the house. I'll be voting against whenever the motion's made, against it out of principle. But I do respect the people in town's position that there was no second. There was over 100 people there, not a lot of people, but there's over 100 people there and nobody seconded it. I don't believe there was a big interest in spending the town's money to preserve the building, so.
I don't even think that it's not an interest. I think Dayton is an old town and I think there are many people that want to see us preserve our history and our historic homes as much as possible. I think part of the problem is that folks aren't connecting the, what are we going to do with it if we put this money into the property? And I personally have never had that question answered. Am I just driving by it? What, what are we doing with it? So.
Well, we've...
I'm sorry, I'll...
No, 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 to kind of answer that, we haven't decided what we're going to do with the building, so that's...
I'm going to make a motion, draw a discussion, so we can open discussion, even though we've been having it. I'm going to make a motion that we demolish this building as the intent was expressed at the town meeting.
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion?
Yes. What I remember about this, because I'm the one that brought this up the first time, when this house was first put on the market, the price tag was around, I'm going to guess $258,000, somewhere around there.
I think you're right.
At the town meeting, I made the motion because my feeling was the town should acquire that property because it abuts the town property and the opportunity to acquire property that abuts our campus, as we call it, is almost nonexistent. Because of the status of, condition of that house, my feeling was take the land, get, excuse me, buy the land, take the house down. There was a house on our south side of the campus that was for sale, but I would not suggest buying that simply because it was, it is a livable home. The price would be substantially more and the lot is much smaller. So I was not looking to take existed, existing viable housing. Getting back to that town meeting, it was seconded, there was discussion. There was a vote not to spend the money and wait and see, you know, and maybe come up with money from another source. There was a motion, or there was discussion on the floor at a subsequent meeting, because that, we continued that meeting, as I remember it, made by Mr. David Arujo, that we can reconsider the vote because he thought maybe we should take another look at acquiring it. At that time, we were told the property had been sold, so we were too late. Lo and behold, evidently that transaction didn't occur. And so it came up on the town meeting warrant at the last meeting when the motion to purchase the property passed, but the motion for the $60,000 that Mr. Pacico referred to, there was no second. So we moved on. This has already come to town meeting twice. I'm looking at the list of names here. My thought is, for those of you on the list that are actually residents of the town of Dayton, where were you at either of those meetings?
Mm-hmm. Some of them were there.
But having, having thought that when I read the names and recognized, I don't know everybody on the list, but I certainly know some of them who are residents, my other thought was, it's gone to town meeting twice. And I understand the first time why it went down. It was expensive and actually we're getting it for almost half of what the original sale price was when we looked at it. As far as the Stout Briggs House, that was unfortunate. That was a beautiful house across the street, but the condition of it required it to be taken down so that the person that bought it, or bought the land, could build on it. The Nat Crane House on Center Street, how many years has it been that the county has been trying to give that property away? Give it to the town? I don't know how many times I've announced it at our own meetings. Anybody out there that even has an inkling, you can have it, but you've got to move it. You can have it for a dollar. They don't want to destroy it. It's a last resort. Well, the last resort happened and the house is gone, which yes, is unfortunate. I went through that house, other than the addition on the back, which was a more modern kitchen, that house was remarkable and the condition was good. But there wasn't anyone willing to take it and for the town to take it, we didn't really have a use for it. I will go back even further. I remember when the Winslow Davis House became the property of the historical commission, excuse me, society. And I remember the fundraises and I remember the, who the selectmen were at the time, who put in so much, I'll call it elbow grease. And then I also remember when the proposal was brought to the town to expend money on the Winslow Davis House through our Community Preservation Act. And the money was granted and they brought it in under budget and they've done a remarkable job, in my opinion, in making it a historical structure that the townspeople can be proud of. I don't believe that any of these other properties rose to the level of the Winslow Davis House, both in support financially and everything else. And I personally love old homes. And the fact that the Waddell Home, that was located where our police station is now and part of the fire plant, that, when I say Waddell, those are the people that lived there.
Recently, yeah.
And she taught school, the kids grew up here, he was an, I believe, an optometrist. It was great to hear the house was going to be moved piece by piece and rebuilt. We had those options for the Nat Crane House. My understanding is the Stout Briggs House was not in a condition that it would have been practical to take it apart because of its physical condition. But in conclusion, I made the motion to take this down because that's what I said at the last town meeting. I'm asking the townspeople to approve this expense with the intent of the town acquiring the land. If it had a viable house on it, I would be... If it had a viable house on it, I would be saying, no, we're not gonna go in the real estate business and all the rental business or anything else. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm just reiterating my position at town meeting and the fact that there have been two town meeting votes on this. And the first one was no, the second one was yes, land only. And so I'm gonna support the, the people who, in effect, took the action they did at the town meetings.
Any further discussion?
I, I have just a general question. Mrs. Santos made a point that there's no need, there's no rush, time is not of the essence here, to raise the building. So my question is, why is it on the agenda?
Because we need to determine whether or not we're putting an article on for special town meeting to expend funds to demolish it. We expect that there's asbestos there, so there's some cost. The estimate I got from the building commissioner for demolition is about $40,000. So I need to know what we're doing with it in order to put an article on. And our warrant closes on the 20th, which is Friday.
I think the other thing, too, is we've acquired possession. We own that property.
We own it, it's ours, it's official.
It's our responsibility now.
So that means if that building is gonna stand, it needs to be insured.
Absolutely.
And that's another reason why the town is very careful about, if the town has to look at property for tax title, we really don't wanna take properties that have, a, a problem, a building on it because you have to insure it. We've already bought this property. We are responsible for whatever is on it. And I can't see paying insurance premiums because someday we might use it for something. And in the meantime, we put more money into it to fix the roof or whatever it is due to it. It's unfortunate. It has gotten to the stage of, that it has. If, if a family had stepped up and said, we're gonna fix this house, I wouldn't have even suggested that we buy it. But the fact that it sat there and sat there and just things got worse and, I just felt that that opportunity for the town to acquire that land for a future use. I don't have a plan for it, but we know it's good land. So that was part of the reason why I made the recommendation I did.
Before we vote, you had mentioned Chairman Pacheco that you're gonna vote no. So before I vote, I would feel comfortable if you shed some light on, if, in a perfect world, how would we proceed with this no vote?
You mean if, if we vote no?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm voting no out of principle because I, I didn't recommend that we purchase this property with the intention of knocking it down. I was hoping that we would be able to preserve the building. It wasn't too long ago this board was, uh, offered a, a plan for the building here to add more space to the building here, which I oppose because I don't think we need this space. We, we just renovated the building next door. So there is a building over there, whether it's worth spending money to use it for offices or what. I'm not sure. I saw it as a possibility of having a library, a new library put over there. I am not a big fan of renovating the Andrew Carnegie Public Library that we have on, on Main Street. We're gonna be adding to it, and then we don't, we're not adding to parking. We're gonna have more people go in there. So I've, I've advocated for a new library. I think it's gonna end up being cheaper than renovating the Andrew Carnegie. So I saw this as part of the library. I saw, it's a long ways down the road. So I mean, it's, we're not making the decision tonight to, to build a library. It's up to the townspeople. We haven't given the grant. We're number 14 or 16 on the list. It could take six, seven, eight years to get to that point. But I saw as a possibility as using that building as part of the, the library, as the entrance for the library, as to use it to put historic stuff and books and whatever, as an introduction to the library. I'm voting no out of principle. I know what the townspeople have voted. I have no intention of going back before the townspeople and ask that, that we put something, a warrant on to fund 40,000, $60,000 to renovate it. I, you know, the townspeople don't have an interest in doing that. I'm voting out of principle. I've been a member of the Dyton Historical Society for over 30 years. We've done a lot of work preserving that building. We like old houses. We've seen a lot disappear in town, and that's one of the reasons why the Historic Commission came up with the bylaw, the delayed bylaw for demolition. So the, if this is voted to demolish the building, the Historic Commission has approximately six months to come up with something, whether to find somebody who's interested in taking the building down and moving it or whatever. They may not, they had no luck with the Nat Crane House. It was about, you, you mentioned for a long time, at least a year and a half that I know of, that it's been out there, that there's been this free building, and there were no takers. So, uh, as a member of the Historic Commission, I'm gonna be active in trying to find somebody or someone or some group to take the building down, but we may not be successful. We weren't successful with the Nat Crane House, so.
I guess my question is, so if, if we found, if, if the Historic, Historical Commission found someone who was interested in the property, wanted to fix it up, and the townspeople vote to demolish it, what happens?
I'm talking about taking the building down. So we have the town, if the townspeople vote to, you know, to fund the, the demolition. I'm, you know, and the Historic Commission finds somebody to take the building, I think we'll have to have a special town meeting to address that and let the townspeople know that someone's gonna come in here and take the building down. We don't need the $40,000 or.
And you would, I think you're about to go here. You would advertise a disposition of property, and it would end up going to the highest bidder, essentially. And the town would recoup money for it.
So, so what we're voting on tonight is, if we vote to demolish, it, it, it answers the question, put it on the warrant. That's all we're voting on tonight.
That, and it kicks off the, the timing for the demolition.
That's my next point. If, in fact, we vote, we, we say, my motion is to demolish it, and in effect, put that on the warrant for the people to vote the money to demolish it. If that happens at town meeting, then there is a six-month time period that if somebody steps forward and says, I want that house, I will move it physically or take it apart stick by stick, or I will buy that building with the understanding, everything that I want in that building, I will take, and the town will dispose of the rest, and I'll pay you X. That's a partial, if you will, savings of the building, at least for historic contents. So there is still options on the table if we vote to. The main thing is, she needs an answer for the warrant, so that's why I made the motion. But I will also say, I agree with, uh, Selectman Pacheco. I, I, I supported a library back in 2007. I did not support changing the existing library because the design I saw was just not acceptable. But also, with the town acquiring this property now, it's our campus. And if down the road voters approve a library, there's land up there. And it would not, if it was decided to put a library on the north entrance boundary or something, we're not, we're in a good position, quite frankly. A better position than we were when we were trying to find a location for the police station because we looked all over, and we talked land swaps with the county and everything else. And that piece of property was not available at the time. So that's why acquiring the property as an asset is such a plus. So to vote to put the article on the warrant to demolish does not mean as soon as the town meeting votes, it's coming down. No, there's a time period, and we can make the announcements like we did. And where it's a smaller structure, somebody may step forward. I mean, the Crane House was a two-family house. Yeah, it was beautiful, but, uh, it, it was probably two and a half years because that first came up when I first got involved. Tom Ferry and I first got involved with the first meeting to talk about that whole concept of building that school and what we were expecting in the neighborhood, you know? So it's been quite a while, but anyhow, um, we've got time.
I, I just, I supported it because we don't necessarily know. There's a lot of different moving pieces. We don't know what would even happen with just the land over there. But the prospect of maybe, like relocate, building the new lot, building a new, excuse me, library there would be a nice way to bring that service from South Dyton sort of into a more centralized, and then sort of a way to consolidate more town buildings so people don't have to drive all over the place, so.
And I still wanna, I wanna eliminate finally the concept of North Dyton and South Dyton. We are Dyton. North is a post office, period. But anyhow.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Abstentions, no abstention. The ayes have it. Okay, the next agenda item is, uh, confirm location of the Veterans Memorial at 495 School Street. I thought this had already happened, but I guess it hasn't.
It's been a while, yeah.
So it's been a while. This occurred before my arrival here in Dyton. The little location is on the assessor's map. I confirmed with Mrs. Borogard today. But the treasurer is requesting, and it's really our closing attorney on this property, for us to just confirm the plan so that they can go forward, and they'll set a date finally for the closing. It has been quite a while. There were some missing parts. We found all the missing parts in that process, and this should be the, one of the last steps you take in selling it.
Yes, I recall, because I remember asking our treasurer about this, and there was an issue with like the deed, so I do, I, I.
The title, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't surprised to see it on the agenda here this evening. I supported this when Chairman Taylor was on the board, serving with Selectman Goulart and I, so I'm happy to see it finally coming to fruition.
So we're gonna vote as to where we're gonna put the, it was a 10 by 10, if I remember correctly. Isn't it 10 by 10?
Yeah, that's what the drawing is there, right there. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, um, we already approved it.
Confirm?
That we confirm the location of the memorial area at, is it 495?
495.
At 495 School Street, as presented on the plan this evening.
Second, on the assessor's map.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention. The ayes have it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could just, if this is okay, it's really not a, a major change. If, when Mrs. Brady puts the minutes together, she references Plan Book 510, page 62. Because that's the, that's sort of the.
Yep.
That's the reference that's at the registry of deeds. Is that okay?
The next item is to vote to extend the interim town account contract.
I'm request, so we had appointed him as an interim in July, and the ending appointment date was August 31st, as we anticipated to have the role filled by then. There's been some delays, so I'm requesting that this be extended until October 31st, 2019.
So has.
That's conservative and gives us.
Has the interim town accountant been working without a contract in effect from August 31st?
From August 31st till present.
So, so will, in the motion, will we, will me make sure there's a continuity between, so that he, effectively, they were always under a contract?
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve Amendment One, the original contract to provide interim accounting services for the time period, August 31st to October 31st, 2019.
Second.
There are seconds. Any further discussion?
No, I just wanted to thank Mr. La, LaViolette for agreeing to continue to serve in an interim capacity, so thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention. The ayes have it. I request to utilize Serpide hours for development, development of a business guide.
As you are aware, one of my goals for this year is to develop a business guide that basically helps point people in the right direction when they wanna open a business, or even members of the public to know who does what type of permitting or offers what kinds of licenses. And Serpide is a good partner for this. We have 20 hours that I'm not aware of any projects that are designated for those hours, so I was wondering if I could have some to complete this project with Serpide.
Do you think you'll need the 20 hours or?
The full 20.
I hope not. Can we start at 10, and I'll just manage that? I'm hoping to be able to do my own.
Well, I'm reading this, and I'm looking at this saying, this is something that we need. Part of what this work is going to do, document, is what I need for the stormwater management plan and/or the illicit discharge plan. Because they want every procedure you can think of documented. And I've been working with planning and zoning and highway to say, I know you do all this, but we've gotta have it in writing. How do you clean a storm basin? How do you, what do you do with the developer coming in about whatever? And when I look at this, to, a guide to inform potential businesses when a permit is needed, which office issues that, steps to apply for it. We could include wording in that steps about reference stormwater plan, reference whatever, contact person, and that kind of thing. Because that will help us with our, also when we report in the year to come, the MS4. Every time you do something that enhances public knowledge, that affects something to do with stormwater, and it seems like everything is affected by stormwater, or everything affects stormwater, this is a plus, so.
I didn't realize that.
They, we don't have to commit to 20 hours, and if they can do it for less than that, it's good. But, um, what has happened with Serpide in the past, when they've worked with us on other projects, they would say, we have X available. And I would say to Bill Napolitano, of that total, you've done this, this, and this. Do I still have my four hours or my five hours? And he says, yes, you do. Because he keeps, if you will, he keeps it in his mind that I still owe this department or this committee five hours. So, um, and, and I don't think it's gonna be squandered. And if there is time left over, he's gonna say, hey, Dyton, you've still got some time available. And that's also part of what we're gonna be talking to him about on that bylaw review.
Okay.
That's coming up. So, just a thought.
So we wanna go with 20 hours, then, then whatever?
I'm okay with that. They usually don't take all the time. They're very, they're very efficient.
And they make sure that we get to use whatever is left.
And, and spread the wealth, so to speak, of multiple disciplines. So to your point, that if he's working on stormwater, he does it billing once instead of twice.
Right, and the fact that, that I'm reading these steps and I'm saying, that's public information, that's good. We can put in a phrase there about what you have to do as far as reference stormwater bylaw or something so that anyone reading it knows that they've got another step, or, or reference stormwater committee or some such thing.
So I just, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
If that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
So we have the motion for us then?
Yeah, we can, yeah. They're, they're not really even for discussion. I just, they're just like very pointed questions. So first, the completion date, is that supposed to be 2020?
Yes.
Okay, so that was my first thing. I was cheating off of yours, Chairman Pacheco. Uh, my second question is, did these 20 hours, where did they come from? Were they from another project? You just get them.
The town gets them. Um, and then it's divvied up based on what we've got going on. Last year, there was some for open space.
Housing production plan.
Housing production plan and stormwater.
Fabulous.
And I'm, you know, I'm not trying to be greedy. I just wanna look at, have a handle on a few of them.
Absolutely.
To get this going.
And I just wanted to make a note to the public. I think oftentimes we, like, we all know what we're talking about, and so we kinda start in the middle of the discussion. The development of the business guide may seem like a trivial thing. It's extremely important to Selectman Goulart's point. Businesses have to be compliant with stormwater regulations. So that's really important, that a potential commercial entity trying to locate to town knows all the boxes they have to check in regards to stormwater. But it's also important in terms of just navigating the bureaucracy of our municipality, and really any municipality. So we have had folks who have been interested in opening, um, retail marijuana shops. They, they were sort of unclear, okay, now I'm at this step, where do I go after here? And I think having a document like the business guide, and, and this board obviously feels it's very important because we made it one of the town administrator's goals for this fiscal year. It's really important because this should, in theory, speed up the process that it takes for a commercial entity to navigate from start to finish, and checking all the boxes that they need to do in order to locate in town. So it's, it's really important that we do this. And I just wanted to make it clear to the public why we would invest 20 hours in something like this. So it's more than a guide. It really is the path to making the process of opening a business in town more efficient and. in town more efficient and faster.
It's also helpful as a training for new employees, so they know what their department does at a glance, or any resident looking to volunteer in some capacity, like, oh, what does the Board of, I mean, this is a silly example, but what does the Board of Health oversee, and it's all right there on one page, so it's a nice tool.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the use of up to 20 hours of time available for Serpide, for Serpide to develop a business guide, as outlined in this proposal.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The other thing I wanna mention is, just as Mrs. Aaronstein was talking, we are required to do employee training on stormwater. The fact that if we get this guide done, somebody or some, a few employees that are gonna be involved, when they talk to business communities, they are going to have the education needed to explain this, so employee education is another issue that we're required to do, so, and business outreach to the business community, so this is gonna benefit quite a bit, and having Serpide be the catalyst for this, they're also gonna know, I gotta make sure I ask this department and that department, so I'm not out trying to figure out how to contact the business community when we get a potential right here, right? So it's, it's a good coordination.
Thank you.
Before we vote, Mr. Chairman, my last comment is that if, if Serpide does not use all 20 hours on this project, will you let the board know?
Of course.
We have a lot of different moving parts, we could probably divert, as you know, those hours into another project that we're working on.
Absolutely.
And another grant could come down the pike that we need help with, for all we know.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good idea, Madam Administrator.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, on the new business appointments, entertain a motion to rescind the vote that we, on June 12th, we appointed Marilyn Edge as the Tobacco Coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we know why we're rescinding it? Did she retire? Oh, okay.
Oh, she did?
She's been the only one we've had.
Yeah, since I've been here.
Going back years, back when I was, 2007.
Really?
Which was when I first met her, yes, yep.
Well, congratulations, Marilyn, we know she's not watching.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. So the Board of Health voted Wednesday on August 28, 2019, to recommend Seth Baker as the new Tobacco Control Coordinator.
Do we have to mention in the motion an effective date, or just?
It would be your vote today.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Seth Baker as the Tobacco Control Coordinator, effective this, today, today's date.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Latch Fletcher from the Dayton Historical Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Ms. Latch Fletcher, for your service.
Absolutely. I like seeing these new names, very exciting.
I'll entertain a motion to point, to point out, I am a member of the Historic Commission, so maybe I shouldn't, why don't you take over for this?
Yes, sure, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Nicholas Vaz to the Historical Commission.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it, I did vote aye.
Okay, I'll forgive you.
It's quite a nice resume for people, an opportunity to look at it. Entertain a motion to appoint Richard Only Jones to the Open Space Committee and Bylaw Review Committee, I saw him maybe last week, and he was being sworn in for some committee that we appoint-
Dayton Trails.
Dayton Trails.
We have put him to work.
Yeah, that's fabulous.
And speaking to him briefly, he had expressed an interest in two other committees, he had, when he submitted his application, he had asked to be appointed to these, so I am pleased that he's interested, he's a new townie, so he's been in town, I think, I believe, less than a year, and look forward to being able to work with him in these committees, so entertain a motion to, yeah, to appoint Richard Only Jones to the Open Space Committee and the Bylaw Review Committee, so we can do it all in one motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I'd just like to thank him, because now all three of those committees have quorums.
And he just needs to get sworn in.
That's fabulous.
He was in last weekend's morning, so once we sign off on his appointment, I'm sure he'll be in.
He reminds me of Chris Chandonay, as like, we got him on one, and then he's like on all of them.
Chris caught on, though.
I know, I know.
And he left those.
I just wanted to thank everyone who, just in general, wants to volunteer for the town, we do a lot of heavy lifting, Madam Administrator does a lot of heavy lifting, as does Mrs. Brady, so it's really nice, as a selectman, we give a lot of our time to see other folks who are inspired to serve, and it's really, it's really a nice feeling to see.
And I would like, as some future date, Town Administrator gives a big cheese, but I would also like to see it done for, for us, thinking about two people who volunteer for these different committees, there've been people on committees 10, 15, 20 years, and they need to be recognized, that many of them are doing it without pay or any kind of a stipend, so maybe in the future, we'll, we'll think of doing something along the same line that-
Oh, I-
I have top bananas.
That's a good idea.
Have you seen my top bananas? They can have top bananas.
We have the big cheese and the top banana, right? You had, you had-
I have only one big cheese, that's like the big deal, but I have multiple big, top bananas.
Who got the big cheese for September?
I did not give it out.
Oh, okay, I was away, so I, I was wondering.
Oh, you haven't given it out, yeah, you'll do that in October, right?
No, we, we had a meeting, she didn't think anybody was worthy of-
So, I don't, I, I mean, you, it's, for those who don't know, I give this award at Department Head Meetings called the Big Cheese, it's ironic, because I actually don't like cheese, I don't eat it.
Oh, I love cheese.
Everyone says that to me.
My first question was, is this thing edible?
No, so it's a little trophy, it, it's a thing of cheese, it says the big cheese, it's supposed to be funny, and I give it out to somebody who's gone a little above and beyond, I do a little write-up about them in my newsletter, just to tell you why this person has gone above and beyond, and if I don't have a, I don't wanna lessen it in any way, so if I don't have something, I don't just give it out, it does have to be earned, and it shows everybody that I might not talk to you all the time, but I see what you're doing, and I appreciate it, so that's what the big cheese is.
Oh, and just for the public's information, she not only giveth it, but she taketh it away-
To give to someone else.
That's right.
Because you only have it for a month.
With one, Linda actually has it right now, still, I didn't take it away yet.
She gets it for two months.
She has it for two months.
But to Chairman Pacheco's point, I do think we should, it might, it's your, it's your thing that you started, so you do it as you, as you see fit, but for example, we had the 40B Committee that did the whole housing production plan, you know, and we have the Open Space Committee working on the open space plan, so maybe it might be nice, like, once that's done.
What we did to recognize our volunteers in West Bridgewater is, we held an, we called it an appreciation day, and the selectmen put it on, they funded it themselves, I'm not putting that pressure on you, but I'm just explaining, so the selectmen would do, like, they would grill, it was kind of a cookout that we had at our council on aging, because it was the largest area, and they got really into it, Selectman Lawrence at the time would always find like a, a local musician, and it was just a really nice, we had it on a Friday afternoon, because we were closed, so that everybody could go, and some people brought things to share, which I always thought was really nice, but they would put on a little cookout, and we called it the appreciation day, we held it every summer, so something to, I mean, I can certainly work with you on devising something, I don't know if you wanna buy top bananas for everybody, could get expensive, but-
Well, primetime does the, to your point, Madam Administrator, primetime does the volunteer recognition ceremony, and I'm almost thinking that maybe in the springtime, when it gets a little bit warmer, we can have a recognition ceremony, appreciation ceremony for all of our volunteers, that might be nice.
We'll work on it.
Mm-hmm, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Announcements. A public hearing will be held on September 25, 2019, at 7:00 PM during the regular selectmen's meeting to consider changing the Board of, Selectmen's to Select Board, residents are invited to attend, so we will have on the, as a warrant article, asking the townspeople whether or not you want to change the Board of Selectmen's name to the Select Board, I can tell you that, briefly, that the Selectmen's Association has changed their name to Select Board, a lot of towns, I don't know how many, but a lot of towns have changed to Select Board, so this will be brought up before the townspeople, but at 7 o'clock at our next meeting, which is next Wednesday, we'll give the public an opportunity to voice their opinions on this. There's gonna be a special town meeting to be held on October 28, 2019, 7:00 PM at the Dayton Middle School Auditorium. A representative from the Census Bureau will be at the Dayton Public Library recruiting, recruiting census takers on the following dates and times, September 30 of 2019, 10 to 1:00 PM, October 15, 5 to 8:00 PM, October 28, huh, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, this before our special town meeting, and for more information, call 1-855-562-2020, or apply our line at The Parks and Recreation, I'm gonna read the notice that they gave us, dear members, yes, we are approaching this, that time of the year, what time is that to do, do you ask, the 8th Annual Richard Leonard Pumpkin Painting Party, sponsored by your Parks and Recreation Commission, this year's party will be held on September, excuse me, on Sunday, October 20 of 2019, from 12 to 4:00 PM at the Dayton Lions Pavilion, with the range date of October 27, 2019, from 12 to 4:00 PM. We at Parks and Recreation are reaching out to the residents for volunteers, this event is one of our larger activities of the year, and any help would be greatly appreciated. If anyone would like to help, you may call Tim Ryan's at 508-415, there's a number missing, 590-
5907.
That's correct.
Or Dave Rosa, or call the Selectmen's Office at 508-669-6431, and follow the prompts.
That is a really fun event, as someone with, I say this, I feel like I say this all the time, as someone with, like, no, no children, honestly, I got a really big kick out of watching the kids paint the pumpkins.
It's fun.
And they do like these rides, it, it's really cool, it's cool, everything is decorated, and they probably definitely need the help to set up, so if you're interested, it's a really fun time.
Did they allow you to paint a pumpkin, or?
No, they didn't, unfortunately, that's why I'm not going this year.
It turns up at the egg hunt, and you have a problem there.
Everywhere I go.
Girl Scout Troop Number 76116, annual stuff the bus food drive, Saturday, October 19, 2019, at the Under the Sun Farm, 10:50, William Street, 10 to 2:00 PM, so this is a great event also, and it gives, I believe that the food will be for our food bank, is that correct?
Yes.
For the Dayton Food Bank, so if you have an opportunity to drop some stuff off, that would be appreciated. The Dayton Historical Society, and as I preface this every time I mention an announcement by the Dayton Historical Society, I am a member and officer of the Dayton Historical Society, I've been a member for 30 years, none of the officers or any members get paid for anything, the Dayton Historical Society is hosting a psychic fair and craft sale on Saturday, October 26, 2019, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Old Town Hall, which is right over here, 1111 Somerset Avenue, to reserve space, call Patty at 508-436-3105, I don't think there was any other, oh, there is. And I'll make an announcement for the Board of Health, the aerial spraying beginning September 17, today happens to be the 18th, so, but I don't believe, I don't believe they did any spraying last night, because I was told it was too cold, so it's possible they didn't do spraying.
They're probably not doing it tonight, are they?
No, it's much chillier tonight than I would have.
Speaking, it's gonna warm up, I mean, the eighties this weekend.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice if it warmed up in here.
I know, I'm over here like this. Holding myself.
The Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, MDAR, will conduct aerial spraying in specific areas of Bristol and Plymouth Counties, beginning on Tuesday, September 17, and continuing for several evenings. Spraying is weather dependent, schedules may change, the listed communities entirely within the spray zone, except for exclusions, Bristol County, Acushnet, Attleboro, Berkeley, Dayton, Eastern, Fairhaven, Freetown, New Bedford, Norton, Rainham, Rehoboth, and Totten. I don't think I need to read the other towns necessarily.
They don't matter.
Well, I'm not sure many people-
Now don't read them, because I know-
Dayton residents, well, anyway, I wanna read the other towns. Plymouth County, Bridgewater, Cava, East Bridgewater, Halifax, Lakeville, Marion, Matipoiset, Middleborough, Plimpton, Rochester, Wareham, Whitman, and West Bridgewater. The listed communities partially in the spray zone, Bristol County, Thomas, Mansfield, and Swansea, Plymouth County, Brockton, Hanson, Kingston, Pembroke, Plymouth, and a tiny corner of Rockland, we don't know what tiny corner, but tiny corner of Rockland.
That's my favorite announcement.
Subjective. Little sliver.
There's no other announcements that I-
I know that on the news, they were talking about, I believe they've got a, a second case in Rhode Island, so even our bordering states, it's certainly certain Rhode Island communities are our borders, so there's concern there. I've got one, I just wanna repeat, I announced at our last meeting, I think it was, that the Associates for Human Services is having their annual big fundraiser, spaghetti supper, on Friday, September 27, approximately 5:00 PM, at the St. Nicholas Parish Center in North Dayton. Debbie Howland contacted me and said that tickets are going quickly, if anybody wants tickets to this event, you can call Debbie Howland at Associates for Human Services, and it's 508-880-0202. Tickets are $12 for adults, $8 for seniors, and $5 for children. This is a very well, I mean, packed event, because it's, they only have two fundraisers a year, and, and they have a raffle, and the money goes to provide services, and, you know, that little extra for the clients that they serve, so this is a very good event. And, Mr. Chairman, I have a presentation to make, I know school opened up while I was away, and as we know, at least one member of the board, who shall remain nameless, always has a problem with a writing instrument, and to be properly prepared, and so I thought-
I actually have one tonight.
...of school opening, yeah, I would do have a-
Is this under $25?
A pencil box. As a matter of fact, the box cost a dollar, and all the pens I got from conferences I went to.
So, when I forget this, are you saying no one's gonna give me a pen?
You can't take it home, you can't take it home.
Okay, I'll keep it.
Put it under the desk, yeah.
Problem solved. Thank you.
Not that we mention the names, Rick, when I-
Well, I was getting nervous, you were looking at me, but I've always had a pen in my hand, in fact, he, he takes it a lot from me, so-
Well, that's my point.
Once you started saying it, I knew-
Only when you were talking about it.
Selectmen's reports, I have nothing to report.
I think we all, I mean, no formal report, but Madam Administrator, myself, you, Chairman Pacheco, Selectmen Goulart, we all attended the Taste of Dayton, so I think we can all thank the Friends of the Dayton Public Library, and the Dayton Public Library itself, for always putting on that event, the food was fantastic, everything I ate was phenomenal, and I think that it was really successful, as it always is, so we thank them.
Yeah, I appreciate a sweet, was it Sweetie Pie?
Sweetest Pie.
Sweetest Pie, Sweetie Pie. I was looking at you when I said Sweetie Pie. Sweetest Pie.
Easiest Pie.
No, I think it's Sweetest.
Oh, Sweetest Pie.
I think it's Sweetest Pie.
It's the Sweetest Pie.
I remember, because I never get any, and I have to go order my own now, so that I can-
I was late getting there, and I, I was able to get the meat pie, I got two slices of the turkey, yeah, we had it last night, it was excellent.
Two? That's why I didn't get one.
Well, I can't buy one, because I did take out-
I saw her with a tray.
Yeah, I had one of those cardboard beer tray things, because-
You were doing runs.
I, I had to buy two of everything, but the, the fruit pies were all gone, and they were gone very quickly.
Five minutes, they said, five minutes.
Very quickly, but it was, that was a great event.
Some pie, though, right? That's right.
Was it good?
She didn't share?
Did she say it was good? Oh, she didn't share, so it was clearly good.
Because I asked, oh, what did you guys have?
I've told people, if you want to get a pie, go, you know, go there first before you get the pizza or anything else, and I mentioned at the Department Head Meeting, my wife and I were 10 minutes late, and the berry pies were already gone.
They were gone in 10 minutes.
They were gone 10 minutes.
I feel like if she, like, we could have a fundraiser on the pie alone, like, if you just bought pies during, like, Thanksgiving.
I've never had something from Sweetest Pie, I'm gonna have to actually go there and get like a whole one.
I've bought pies there, they are-
Chicken pies are good. Chicken pies are good.
The, the pie I got the other night was two slices of turkey vegetable. Yes, it was very good. All I had to do was heat it up and cook some, you know, some aside vegetable, whatever. But it was, it was very good. But I have had, I have, I have ordered pies there for special occasion. They are excellent.
We'll have them at our volunteer appreciation thing.
Oh, absolutely. And it was also nice seeing 1712, for their first taste of Dyton, which was very nice.
It was good.
Yes, it was. It was good. And even the local restaurants that we see every day, I'll go almost, you know, every week. I got lasagna from Alice's. I don't remember seeing lasagna on the menu, is it? But it was good.
Well, I had the shepherd's pie, and I don't recall seeing, and it was phenomenal.
The only thing I remember was, he does have chicken nuggets as an appetizer, so, but I didn't remember the lasagna, but it was excellent. And I said, oh, can you wrap that up? He says, turns around, he whips out with two little styrofoam containers. He was all ready for takeout.